Would you like to join me for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job.
Madam CAO.
There are no modifications to the agenda this morning.
But you. I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we move the consent calendar forward for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's say we have some public comment on it.
Many items today. Good, short day. We're going to be out of here in a few minutes. I did wish to make a comment on item number six. It's the appointment of interim director of human resources. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you reported out of closed session one time, and I don't know when this actually decision was made, other than maybe it was made in closed session. When it got reported out, it wasn't reported out at that time the decision had been made, and it's being brought forward now. That's what I see possibly having happened, don't know. I just was kind of watching. I always watch, you know, the reporting out, you know, on the closed session so that I know if anything happened, and I don't recall that being reported out. The decision was made somewhere. So, anyway, I just want to acknowledge that it's been done. I think that's great. It says here, appoint Kelly Barnes to position of director of human resources on an interim basis, and starting July 29th. Hopefully you'll find somebody else to fill in eventually, or I don't know, maybe Kelly has a skill set you need to be appointed permanently to the position. We do want to avoid what's happened before, and I guess you had a resignation, and of course, the public always is kind of curious when the resignation of your prior director there, if that has strings, if it's a golden parachute, how a resignation happens, if there were terms. So, again, I'm sure now that this has been done, I'm sure that's open to investigation for a public records request. So, thank you for my opportunity to speak on this one today.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? And with that, before we vote, I think Supervisor Fennell, you have a proclamation for Mr. Richmond.
Thank you very much, Chair Bone. So, it gives me great pleasure to read this proclamation, and hopefully we'll have at least a couple of people here to accept it. Whereas Humboldt County was named for Alexander von Humboldt, Enlightenment era scientific revolutionary and polymath, whose explorations and writings directly inspired Darwin, Bolivar, Jefferson, Thoreau, and Muir. Whereas von Humboldt's legacy has resonated for generations around the globe, his discoveries and scientific rigor becoming building blocks for the natural sciences, climatology, ecology, habitat preservation, and humanitarian justice. And whereas his unifying vision of nature, including deep concern for native peoples, those held in bondage by imperial powers, and the negative effects of human activity on cultures and the natural world. And whereas von Humboldt's values are of great importance to Humboldt County as we strive to build sustainable communities locally and a vital earth worldwide. And whereas in many ways Humboldt County citizens manifest von Humboldt's basic concept that all living systems are interconnected and mutually dependent, and in doing so highlight the human-nature bond that thrives throughout the lands and communities of Humboldt County, making our county a magnet for new businesses, tourists, and scholars. And whereas von Humboldt's 250th birthday is September 14th, 2019. And whereas concurrent with worldwide celebrations, von Humboldt's 250th birthday will be marked locally by Planet Humboldt, a summit of inspiration, a community collaboration at Eureka Sequoia Center sponsored by Arcata's Abundant Earth Foundation with support from Rotary District 5130 Special Projects. And whereas an essential quality of Humboldt County culture, the human-nature bond, infuses tradition, traditional and emerging businesses, agriculture, service efforts, government planning, education, and the arts, and will be a central element of Planet Humboldt. Now, therefore, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors declares September 14th, 2019, Alexander von Humboldt Day, in special recognition of his 250th birthday this year, and to mark his birthday in years to come, and encourages the citizens of Humboldt County to observe every September 14th as an opportunity to celebrate and further Humboldt County's leadership in manifesting the vision and inspiration of our namesake for more vibrant communities, deeper service to humanity, and an evermore verdant earth. And the proclamation's already been moved, so I'd like to present.
The phone is keeping.
Of course it is.
I know.
Still, still, stay there. Prodeck moment. So much in here. Yeah, of course.
Thanks to the Board of Supervisors for declaring September 14th Alexander von Humboldt Day, and supporting the Abundant Earth Foundation, local Rotarians, and our many community partners in presenting Planet Humboldt, a summit of inspiration. The event features a resilience affair, providing tools and strategies for sustainability, an idea summit linking local, national, international authorities through web conferencing, and an awards reception honoring local luminaries who have carried out von Humboldt's vision in their work and life, making our region a beacon of caring of the natural world. This caring is a tradition. When Albert Etter, renowned Southern Humboldt agronomist, saw the need to save a few redwood trees back in 1905, little did he know that his notion would eventually grow into Humboldt Redwood State and National Park. Little did Bob McKee know, when he returned to Whitethorne in the late '50s, that he would be a key to bring a vibrant and dedicated community to Humboldt. Little did David Simpson know, when he was a digger feeding the hippies in the Haight Asbury, that he and his life partner Jane would move to Petrolia and become icons of international environmental action and political theater. These are some of the people and places featured at the Planet Humboldt event and sent to the world via the web. The long-term goal is to attract thousands to come here, not just for redwoods, rivers, or cannabis, but all of those and more, a place to learn, grow, and be inspired by the land and who we are. Our region faces many challenges. Back to the lander's concern for the environment has ironically morphed into disruptions for these same ones who called for environmental action in the first place. Changing coastlines will impact many homeowners and wide swaths of farmland. Wildfire is a constant threat. Underlying all of these is the stress and grief of creeping habitat loss. But as von Humboldt said, all systems are mutually dependent. The systems of the arts, commerce, government, academia, the native nations, the animals, and rivers, all thrive or die in a web of life that we mutually support with helping hands. Joining hands in a circle of caring and action makes the work joyously easier. Alexander von Humboldt was never here, but he would have been in his usual state of awe seeing our inspirational home. He would have seen generations working and caring for the land. He would have encouraged us loving, to lovingly embrace the inevitable changes wrought by time, for only by loving can we truly accept. Declaring his birthday as our day, we link our future to his legacy. The challenges are great, the love and spirit are deep. We can only hope that 250 years from now, our children's children's children will say about Alexander von Humboldt Day, little did they know. Finally, we need to thank Andrew Barnett, former president of the Garberville Rotary Club, for all his work to organize the Alexander von Humboldt Day. Thank you again for the proclamation.
Thank you. It's always fun to hear how we got here and why we're named this, so. All right. With that, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, seeing none.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll now have public comment on non-agenda items. Jeff?
Good morning, Supervisors, County staff. Hey, I wanted to just bring up, we don't have a full house, and that's actually great because I'm here to talk to you folks. Wanted to talk about our infrastructure, and about our direction as Humboldt County, all the way in Humboldt County, not just here in Eureka. So, I'm not really talking, I know last week the Aqua Fish Farm thing came up, and talking about giveaways and all the stuff I heard. Couldn't stay and speak on the subject. Last week I had another meeting. But I really want you guys to consider what we're doing here as a county, and if we don't have the infrastructure in place, we've had so many businesses come and want to open up shop here throughout the years, even before my time, and we don't have it here to facilitate these businesses. And if our county, meaning you folks, would help with our infrastructure and come together, I know we have some stuff going on, but I mean, I think we need to look at it from a lot bigger picture, that if we invest, no matter how we do it, bonds, measures, however we get the money to do it, you're going to get your monies back tenfold in tax revenue here at the county, which we're going to be able to, it's not just about the growth, it's really just about being sustainable here in Humboldt County, and being able to have progress here in Humboldt County, be able to put our children to work here in Humboldt County. And if we don't do anything at all, and we have these places come in, or these businesses come in, and all of a sudden it's like, well, the infrastructure is not here, they're going to go other places. And it's the other places that are excelling, revenue-wise, tax base-wise, population-wise. Not that we want to grow our population and ruin what we have here in Humboldt County, but we do want to grow, and we want to have sustainable growth, we want to have good jobs, good-paying jobs for the community, for our grandkids, and I just hope you guys would consider thinking about how to do it. I'd be willing to, I know there's lots of bonds money out there that we could do, there's some, even some SB1 extra bond money out there that we could get, so I'd like to talk to you all about that at some point. So, I thank you for your time, and again, have a great day.
Thank you. I'd like to know why we didn't have any SB1 money this year, too.
Not yet.
Yeah.
We got some, a little bit.
Well, that's the interesting thing, is that as we as a county spend our bond money, and if we have to spend our credibility and things to do this, who gets most of the benefit? It's the state. So, definitely, they should be doing, what do we get, 13 or 17? A small amount of whatever is generated here stays here, the rest gets laundered and comes back, some of it back. So, this is our last meeting of the month, and then I believe, if I understand it, the next meeting on the schedule is the 20th, and then the 27th of next month. So, in the meantime, we're going to have a Coastal Commission meeting coming up here, and I highly recommend that people take the opportunity to attend, or you can stream it live. I'm probably going to go speak, if I have time, during public comment, and a lot of what my grandson and I do is problem-solving. Well, I saw a problem with how this works. I wanted to go down to a meeting down south to talk about what I referred to as the Trinidad Rancheria land grab, right on the public access there, and it was going to cost me $2,000 and about three days' worth of my time. So, to solve this problem, I'm going to request that they have staff look into maybe Skyping, so that if we wish to participate in a meeting, rather than what I call venue shopping happening, where it's as far away from us as can be, where we can come down to our local office or a site, I guess there's probably, what, four or five districts, and so we can go there and have our input in a verbal and physical presence through current technology. I think that's a pretty easy thing to ask for, I don't think it's out of line. I would promise not to use it on a very often basis, maybe only once a year, if I could make the recommendation. But I highly recommend people attend this meeting and see what's local. Of course, county-wise, it's all about cannabis, and that's fine, you know, it's going through. And I did check with staff, that was, that was a take-it-or-leave-it thing last meeting, you couldn't make any changes at all on that, or it'd have to go back before the Coastal Commission. I have a problem with the one project, and I tried to think of how many buildings in Humboldt County are five stories or more, and I don't think I could come up with one for each of my 10 fingers. I've always felt size matters, and in Humboldt County, small is beautiful. I don't like going down to LA and seeing all these big skyscrapers. I guess one of the tallest buildings is probably the Carson Mansion. To me, a little bit, that does represent a whole bunch of what happened to our woods around here as far as things going environmentally, but I like smaller projects, I like smaller business. I always liked being out in the trees when I was young, hanging out in the trees, and I like trees to be the tallest thing around, not five-story man-made buildings, so I will be speaking against that particular project. It does not make sense to me, and I wish other people who have like mine would show up and speak. Thank you for my opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I will close that part of the meeting. Are we going to go into closed session now, and we will be back after closed session to discuss the rest of the agenda? So, I will have Jefferson, County Council, read this in.
Chair, just to be clear, is it just the one closed session, or do you intend to do both?
I think we're doing both. Yep.
Chair, it's the intent of the Board to meet in closed session on two matters. First, a conference with legal counsel pursuant to Government Code 54956.9A1 in the matter of blank versus Di Matteo, DR 190340. It's also the intent of the Board to meet in closed session to consider the discipline, dismissal, or release of a public employee pursuant to Government Code 54954.5E and 54957B.
All right. Public comment on the closed session?
Well, you have your county council's thing on there to discuss again. My understanding is winding its way through the court. Of course, then there's appeals, and there's renegotiations and everything. Still recommend that you try and settle that as soon as you can. Court costs continue to go up, you have somebody on paid administrative leave, that continues to happen, and I don't know what the second item is. I don't know if that's basically to terminate County Council. I don't know if it's to terminate Amy or anybody else around. It's one of those vague things, you never know what it's all about, and I guess you'll report out if some action's taken. On the other hand, I would say that, you know, you shouldn't always report out, because I think that thing earlier I saw there, I never saw it reported out, and the decision was made somewhere, and that's always appreciated, to be transparent, appreciate acknowledging you're going to closed session on both items and getting that out of the way. And so, you're time-certain out of here, and obviously there's no time certain back, or do you have, anybody have a rough estimate as far as how long I should twiddle my thumbs until we come back?
We will, we will be back here within three minutes after the closed session is complete.
That sounds like a reasonable assessment of the situation. Wouldn't expect anything more. Of course, if you come out three minutes beforehand, then I'm going to see that something's wrong with your closed session. All the seasoned procedures and protocols. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on your closed session.
Jefferson?
Yes, Chair. As to item one, there is no reportable action. As to item two, the Board has approved a separation agreement and general release with Ms. Di Matteo.
Thank you. And with that, I think we go to the appointment for the Headwaters. Appointment to fill vacancy on the Headwaters Board. I guess I'll turn it over to the committee.
I'll start, if that's all right.
Good.
Thank you. The committee, appointment committee for, to recommend appointments for the Headwaters Board did meet a few times. We reviewed multiple applications that came in, there was, I don't know, how many applications were there? Seven, I was, this was going to be my guess, we had seven applications. We reviewed them, we had interviews with two of the applicants. There was two applications that were very well-done and robust in their information and as well as background, and after having the two interviews, we made a selection. And then, that's basically the process that we went through. Lots of great experience, lots of great enthusiasm from all participants, and looking at the Board and the direction and other things, this is the selection we came up with, and so I'm going to let Mr. Spain take it from here. Unless, no? So, tell me, Amy, what happens next?
So...
I'll let Amy take it from here.
Yeah, let Amy take it from here. So, the Headwaters Subcommittee is made up of Supervisor Wilson, Supervisor Madron, and the treasurer-tax collector, John Bartholomew. And so, today, that committee is making a recommendation to appoint Jennifer Katzos, or Jenna, as she likes to be called, and that essentially concludes that staff report, and it is now up to your Board to discuss or make a motion.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I will also point out that the decision was unanimous by the voting members, which were the three electeds, but we also took input from County Administrative Officer as well as the Headwaters Director, and it was unanimous decision pretty much across the Board. I think that Jenna is going to bring a lot of great energy to this Board with some increased diversity and a lot of enthusiasm for hard work and getting these funds out to our community to do some good work and creating jobs. So, it was a, for me, it was my first time doing this, and it was a good process. I felt really good about the outcome.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And when you mentioned the three electeds, I'm hearing that our treasurer-tax collector was one of them. I was curious if we could ask him up, and if he had some thoughts he might want to share, or not. Sorry, John, I didn't warn you. That's what happens when you come in the room.
Chair Bone, fellow supervisors, and Supervisor Bass in particular, John Bartholomew, treasurer-tax collector, and I have been a participant in the Headwaters Board selection team for a number of years, and it, I think the, this process this year was probably one of the more satisfying processes that I've had over time, just because the, in previous years, we have interviewed so many people, and it gets confusing and convoluted, and you could go in so many different directions. And this year, what happened is that we had a number of repeat applications, and for various reasons, we decided not to interview these other folks because we'd already done it, and we had documentation from those previous interviews. And the interviewees that we did this year were both highly qualified, and they both had a lot of strengths. They're, neither one of them should feel badly about being, not being selected, because they were at the top of the list for very strong reasons, but due to the makeup of the Board at present, adding Jenna, to me, makes a whole lot of sense just to add a bit more diversification and add a younger perspective to that part of the Board. Buzz Webb is termed out, so he is going to be replaced by Jenna, and I think this makes great sense. Jenna brings a lot of energy that is not always present on the Board, and I think that she will add a nice aspect to the Board going forward with a different perspective on interacting with new developing businesses in Humboldt County.
Through the chair, I just make follow-up questions?
Yeah, please.
So, actually, you touched on a point I was going to ask earlier, is you said a lot of the folks had already gone through the process or applied, and I think there's at least two that hadn't, so I was kind of curious whether it was you or the others to ask, how did you decide who actually to interview? Because that question came up, and since you mentioned it, I thought I'd just follow up with you.
I guess one should be aware of what they're saying at the time they're speaking it, huh? The, and this has happened in previous Headwaters interviews, in that we've brought back the same people that have interviewed in previous years, and they, there are, there's a lot of interest in being on Headwaters Board, and a number of members of the community, which is fantastic. And while all of them have, bring different qualities and different experiences to the Board, it, we have to weigh what the current makeup of the Board is with those individuals, and we are familiar with them from previous experience and previous years of interviews with them, and we've appointed them, not we, but we've made recommendations for their appointments. And I think that as time goes on and as Humboldt County changes, we need to change with the times, so to speak, and I think that the people that we decided not to interview this year may have been more viable candidates than previous times when they've interviewed, and that's why that we went through a more rigorous interview process, which included them. But due to that past experience, and with the changing times in Humboldt County, I think that Jenna, in this case, is the prime candidate, and as Supervisor Madron and Wilson also mentioned, it was a unanimous vote, and I do not have any qualms about Jenna becoming part of the Board.
And also through the chair, I just wanted to finish. No, I think one thing I like that Jenna brings is the arts aspect, and I know throughout the country, arts and economic development, I mean, all the conferences I go to, there are something that's, you know, brought up about that, so I understand that. I think I have more of the heartburn, because I know at least, I mean, I encouraged Eddie Morgan to put his name in. I don't think Eddie had ever applied before, and maybe I'm wrong, so to hear that the others weren't interviewed because they had already been interviewed in the past, still wasn't ringing right with me. I mean, and I'm not on the committee. If I was on the committee, then I think I would have more to say about it. It just, I had been asked, and so I was trying to find out. So, like I said, I wasn't here, and I appreciate the work of the committee, as well as you to go through the process. I was just trying to define it.
Yeah, and those interviews, the resumes of all the applicants were very detailed, and to tell you the truth, I don't remember all the particulars about Mr. Morgan, so I can't address that specifically, and I wouldn't. But again, all the applicants were very strong, and they bring a lot of experience and knowledge to the Board, or they would, but it's our job to determine or try to determine who the best person is for the current Board makeup, and that's why we...
No argument, I just had the problem with everyone who's interviewed before. That's the only argument I have, and it's, no need to continue, I just wanted to find out, and you answered.
Yeah, and, yeah, I was probably along the same lines that we interviewed less than 30% of the applicants that applied, and so, and I, two things have got, that she, and I don't have a problem with the, I do have a problem that not everybody got interviewed because I've been on that committee, and I'm sorry it was so long and tedious about doing that, but I think if people apply, they need to at least get the avenue of, you know, the choice. Eddie, you know, like she said, I was one of the ones that thought Eddie was a combat veteran... veteran, owns a business in Old Town. But you said that she fits best where the board is going and where Humboldt County's going, and I'm in a loss. Maybe I'm a, maybe I'm a dinosaur. I just, where are we going? And where's the board going? Maybe I misunderstood something there.
And, again...
Because we've got Elizabeth Cameron, who's pretty young, she's real young, and Diana Rios would like to think, you know, I think she's still fairly young, so. The diversity, I thought, was here, and we keep hearing that we needed more diversity. I just want to know why, I'm just, I'm not, don't have a problem with the choice, I'm just having a problem with why people that didn't get interviewed. I like the new perspective, and the best way to get new perspective is to, the two people that were here have probably been in the county, I think, both less than six years.
I'd like to answer that question, if I may, from my perspective. We re-looked and reviewed the applications. There were two standout applications that did a really good job in their application. Like, they were professionally put together, they were detailed, they had all the qualifications, they stood out in the application process. And from that, didn't, we, I personally didn't, you know, look at whether they had applied before, I looked at the applications, and there were two that were very standout in that, in that process, and that's where we started from. And I would say that the, that we can say or talk about the representation on the board and those sorts of things, and that is meaningful, but the, the choice of Jenna, her application was stellar, her interview was great. I mean, and, and we had another good interview as well, but I'm just saying, we, you know, when you combine those two things together, that generally takes you to the top. The other things that bring this person's qualifications to the fore isn't just the connectivity with the arts community, it's actually the, it's the, that's how I'm trying to put it into words, it's the interface and interaction this person has within the community, not just the arts community, but the small business community as well. And I think that those things are what brought this person to the fore in terms of their qualifications. And I just want to make sure that that's said clearly, that, you know, we really did do a robust process of reviewing the applications and having an interview. That's what I want, that's all I have to say on this.
And I'd like to thank Supervisor Wilson for helping dig me out of the hole I was getting myself into, because his comments are right on regarding the process that was used. There were certain applications that were much more in-depth than, than a few of the other ones, so that was part of that process, too.
You've got two of us again.
Supervisor Fennel, please.
So I, I don't want to take away from Jenna's appointment. I, I think that Jenna's a wonderful candidate, and I really do appreciate the, the fact that we're looking more and more at the arts. But I do, I did hear from one of the applicants that they had not been interviewed, and they really did not feel good about that. And I wonder what the process was in terms of letting people know, we're not going to interview you, you're done, because this particular individual basically said, it's a mystery to me, I don't know what happened. And so I think that if that is the, the course to take, it's important to know that when people put their name out there, their respect, they, they expect some respect. And I also, you know, want to keep really clear on the mission of the Headwaters Fund. That shouldn't drift. I mean, the mission is stated clearly on what the Headwaters was designed for. So I, I, I think maybe, John, you're feeling a little picked on here with all the, the talk, because you're talking freely, but it is kind of, it is exposing a little bit of, of what I consider, at least from the individual I spoke with, somewhat of a hurt feeling for stepping up and not really feeling respected.
And I, I appreciate those comments, Supervisor Fennel, and my anticipation was, when I went into the board, the Headwaters Board Committee meeting, that we were going to be interviewing all the candidates. That was my anticipation, but I'm not sure how that got narrowed down within the conversation, but, but that's the direction that the committee took. And I, I do feel for the applicants that were not interviewed, because I would feel the same way. So, so maybe that is, that is something that we should consider next time, and make sure that you do interview everyone, so that they are treated fairly from their perspective and our perspective also, because, again, we did not interview all the applicants again this time, so.
And if I might suggest, I mean, it might be that somebody writes in an application that clearly does not reflect an understanding of Headwaters, or, or, and clearly reflects in, someone who's not really a good candidate, at least contact them and say, you know, maybe you didn't understand what the mission is, so, that kind of thing. I don't know. I don't know how to mention it. I've been on the board, my, the committee myself, and part of the decision to appoint Elizabeth, I think she's doing well, and Diana as well, so I'm happy about all of that. Be great to have Jenna, but I just think it's good to have this conversation.
I, I totally agree, and again, I, in hindsight, I think that all the applicants should be interviewed going forward, just to make sure that they feel appreciated for stepping up to the plate and putting their name out there to, to be part of the board. And so I, I, I agree with that perspective and sentiment. And, but all that said and done, I do feel total confidence that we selected an appropriate person in Jenna for the board.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, I don't want Jenna's, to get lost in this whole conversation. I think it's more about process is more, and, and it wasn't just the arts that I thought was interesting. I mean, I, the Next Gen, I'm very, I agree that those two applications were the most One was really long, it was so complete. And, but I think Supervisor Fennel hit on it, just was, nobody knew where it was in the process. Because I actually, in the meantime, let's say Eddie, because I put, he's now on, I think he's going on my, on the Human Rights Commission. But I'd asked him, I said, hey, you know, have you heard about Headwaters, and what are you doing? Because we don't even know what's going on. And it was like, I don't know, I think I fell into a black hole, and I have no idea. So perhaps even if we don't, if people clearly don't meet the criteria, at least call, or at least inform. And I think that was more to the point of what I was hearing from, you know, that. So, but I, so I, it's more about the process, and I wasn't on the committee, and I'm not involved in the process, so I think it's just something we can always morph a little bit.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that feedback, and staff can definitely work on keeping people more informed on the process. So our apologies to those who didn't feel included in the process, and, and in the future, we'll work on making sure they're, they're notified of this, of where we're at in the process. So we can, we can work on that.
And I don't want just staff and John to fall on their swords. We're all, we all own that responsibility, and I accept that criticism, and I think it's reasonable. And, yeah, if, if we continue being on this committee next time or whatever, then we'll definitely make sure that that's not repeated. Thank you.
And I don't think it's criticism, I think it's just an overall appearance. Because for me, two people out of seven, and I looked at some of the other ones, and the problem is, is we're asking, we have thirty-five commissions, I think, thirty-five, thirty-six commissions, we ask people to apply for. And if I ask somebody to apply, or I put out there, if you don't put out a, if you don't do an elaborate, you're not going to get interviewed, I think. And Jenna, it was great, great to see that her interview went really well, but when there's only two people being interviewed and not seven, or, you know, even if you want to kick out two of them, there were some pretty good applications with pretty good qualifications. And I, again, I support Jenna one hundred percent, but I think we fall down to the public, because we're asking people to fill out an application, take six to ten hours a month out of their lives, and, oh, by the way, we're not going to pay you diddly. So I think if you want them to spend four hours to do an application and make an elaborate and still not get interviewed for whatever, or whatever the case may be, I think the idea is there should have been a little bit more, and I appreciate the CAO stepping up, because getting the phone call going, have you heard anything? Have you heard anything? I think just doesn't do, I think it does a disservice to Jenna, because I think she might have risen to the top anyway. But when you, when only two horses race out of the seven that were entered, there's no show or anything then, so that's the only thing I'm thinking, so.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I too appreciate the, the input from my colleagues. It's been well heard, and as a new member, I'm learning. But I do very much appreciate that input and all of the applicants, which we did review their applications. And with that, I would move that we appoint Jennifer Katsos to fill the vacant seat on the Headwaters Fund Board.
Second.
Been moved to second. Do we have any public comment on this, and then I'll come back to you still?
Well, I like the idea of a whole bunch of people falling on swords, but that doesn't really seem to fix the situation we're in right now. I'm big on policies, procedures, and protocols. I like consistency. The message that's being sent out to all these people who do put their names on the hat and not to be treated on an equal basis is a real big problem. It's a problem for me and a problem for you, asking people to come forward. I believe, as far as reviewing goes, that this Steve Madron hadn't interviewed any of the other people that were priors. So I would think, you know, that the committee would want to have had that. Maybe Mike interviewed one or two of them, having been on the committee before, don't know, maybe he hadn't in. So these people had only been interviewed by, by John here, and I appreciate, you know, John's input on things. But I would step back and I would ask that this, this, there's no hurry. Step back and ask that these people given the chance for an interview here and, and follow the thing, and it may be the same end result, and that's great. But then there is no cloud, there's no perception that maybe somebody had a personal relationship with somebody who's being put onto this board, and it's just, it's just sad to see this message sent. And I'm asking, this was just a recommendation to you folks. I mean, this, some people are acting like it's a done deal. No, it's a recommendation, you have a motion. I would ask that this be, that you consider asking this to go back to committee and give the people a chance here. It's, it's not too late to unwind where we're at right now, it's not going to hurt the process, in fact, it's going to help the process, it's going to encourage all the people that you solicit. There were a lot of good candidates. I went, I went through that list, and there wasn't just, I didn't just see two people, I saw quite a few names. The other big problem I have here is some people are not good at filling out these applications. And that's why the face-to-face time is when you really are able to find out and get your questions answered. Without going through that part of the process, your, your best candidates possibly won't be put in the chair. So again, I, I have quite a bit of angst regarding moving forward with this. Probably will go forward, but there's a tendency to make a mistake once and just say, well, this one's done, so it's in the books, and not undo the mistake. So I'm, I'm recommending, you know, I don't know if the rest of the procedure will be here, whether normally you would rate the people, is what you normally would do for something, a position like this. I don't know whether you were going to go through it, other names were going to be brought forward, and see where a vote shakes out. I mean, that's your chances to make your comments now regarding people that you might want to have on there, and I'd like to see that, that, that chance of maybe taking any cloud off of this gone through on that kind of a procedure, where you go ahead and rate your first and second, and see where we go. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I will, um, thank you. Close the public comment. Supervisor Fennel?
I, I just want to, I just want to reiterate that I do think that Jenna will make a wonderful addition to the board. I would also call attention to the fact that there's another term coming up in 2020, that is, Greg Seiler will be termed out. So what I would hope out of this process is that those who are interested in serving will be assured that the process will be a bit more inclusive and thorough on the next time around, and would not be discouraged from offering their services in the future.
And with that, been moved to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, we are going to go back in to closed session.
No, we did it, we're done.
We are going back into closed session.
Thank you.
Regarding an earlier matter that was...
Chair, that matter's already included, I don't see...
I'm just going by my note. Do both attorneys concur that it's...
I, I would take the, it's already been reported out, so that matter is...
All right. With that, we're adjourned.